And welcome, come to the four o'clock work session of the Douglas County Commission. Today, we are talking about the Douglas County Master Plan for the JLE. And an addition project update. Since this is a work session, we do not take public comment in it. We do not take any votes during work sessions. It's for information purposes only, but if you'd like to provide public comment on any of the things you hear or work session, you're welcome to join our 5:30 business meeting, which will be directly after this. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah Plinsky.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Before I turn it over to Jeff Lane with Trainer HL, just to want to note that we've got a lot of staff here in the room today for this important topic. And staff, if we have questions, we can certainly call on staff to answer any of those questions as we go. I'll want to welcome Judge McCabria, who is here at the table with us and other members of the District Court. And I'll turn it over to Jeff to introduce his team. We're not hearing you on Zoom.
Sarah, thank you. So I want to make this. I want to make this presentation quickly, not to run through the information, but I want to open it up and give you plenty of time to ask questions. And whether that's this group that's sitting here at the table and the men I'll introduce, or if it's through some staff that are here. So I'm going to try to go through this as kind of speedy as possible to make sure we get that accomplished. So many of you have already seen me, know who I am, but I'm Jeff Lane with Trainer HL, Brad Clark with Trainer HL, who's done all the work. And then Tim Okingay with JE Dunn as well, that's been working with us to capture costs and those types of things that we're going to talk about a little bit today. So real quickly, we want to go back through and just highlight the goals and objectives. Talk a little bit about how we got to the space pieces. So market trends relates to costs. And then we will get to where everybody wants to be, which is the master plan options. So today, one of the things I just want to circle back to, because I think it's paramount to think through as it relates to the overall project and what the study really started to think through, which was separate circulation, identifying space standards as it relates to what we're trying to accomplish, both on the court side as well as office side, improving operations and efficiency. So trying to think about how do we capture the space for each department in a manner that tries to at least think about operations and efficiencies, and then looking at the county need for the next 20 years. So I think those are really, really the pieces at the end of the day that this master plan does and allows us to talk through. So here, just to highlight, many of you have been in this building and understand it. But you can see there to the left, we've got staff, public and in custody. So this is your current facility and how those individuals move through the facility. You can see that they're really, at the end of the day, has the opportunity for both staff in custody and public to be able to cross paths, which in today's world of courts is not the most, the best way to do business and or handle the operations. This is where your existing departments are currently. So you can see that there are a multitude of departments within this facility. Again, these are things you already know. But I want to highlight because the part of what you're going to see in the master plan, I hope resonates back to what we're trying to accomplish, which is there are courts functions that are currently separate from each other. And there's public functions that public individuals come to and are part of that are maybe not in the most, the best place to be when public come. So that's kind of, kind of the idea there that the end of the day. Many of you know where your current facilities are and what county land and spaces are owned. And the reason for this, just to again, to highlight the idea that the county has a lot of separate spaces and places. And so what does this master plan do to try to consolidate some of those types of ideas? We talked about this last time I was here when I gave an update. So here are some existing numbers. You have about 100,000 square feet in your existing building. The building efficiency, you can see down there at the bottom in the blue and the red. So again, talking about your total gross square footage and your circulation square footage and what that efficiency looks like. As it relates to court, you have about 63,000 square feet, which is about 62% of the building total. So that's kind of where we are currently. So with that, the county court on an average is about 12,000 to 15,000 square feet per courtroom. That includes the ancillary spaces. That's just not courtroom space. That includes judges' space that includes the holding, that includes all of those pieces that we're going to talk about in a little bit. Your current judicial building is about 7,000 square feet per courtroom. So you can see the inefficiencies and the things that are, I would think, state of the art that aren't there currently today. I will tell you though, that that building has served this community for years. It was one of the things we were just chatting about. That building was built and designed in the seventies. It's 2023. Just want to put that out there. Some benchmarking that we were capturing here as we went through before, again, just some quick numbers to think about percentages. So what's that look like? Court sets and what you're currently at is about 35% of the square footage. In a typical courtroom, you would see about 45% being in the square footage. So let's talk a little bit about the space program. Last time I was here, I gave you a summary of what that looked like. I want to come back and talk about how we got to where we are rather quickly. Again, just a reminder, space standards, the staffing and the functional needs, and then the projections. And that really comes to where we are from a space program perspective. So that's how we get to the numbers we're going to show here in a second. And then we, we came up with alternative scenarios. You're going to see five today. What I will tell you is we had more than five and you know us well enough, we did that. But we talked to not just the users and the stakeholders, but we talked amongst even Sarah and Jay and pared them down to the ones that I think make the most sense as a group that allow us to have a good conversation today. This is not a design. So what you're going to see today, and I tell this not just to you, you know it, but tell this to the public as well, is this not, is not a design. It's an idea of being able to capture space, know where it can go and know that we can get that accomplished within the dollars that we're going to share today. So we did look at space standards and I'm going to walk you through a couple of space areas that we looked at. So we did look at courtroom space. So this is a jury capable courtroom, again, right sizing it and looking at it. And then also in a more specialty court or hearing room type space, again, looking at those square footages as it relates to what those look like, how those lay out. These again are not the designs that may occur within your facility, but these give us a good benchmark and idea of what that space needs to be to be able to capture the functions. And then just a quick idea about what space looks like in an office space or a cubicle space. Again, trying to identify what that is so we can carry that forward with every department. Here's the space program that we chatted about earlier. As you can see here, a summary of each of the departments. We have a total of the five-year need down there in the green of about 185,000 square feet. And then a 20-year need of about 206,000 square feet. Each of those are tallied up and will be provided in our final booklet for each of the departments. So you can flip through that, understand that. We did spend a lot of time with each of the departments multiple times to get it right, to make sure we have all the space that's there today. The space needs for the five-year plan and then the space needs for the 20-year plan. So that projection has been looked at collectively as a group. So what's the market conditions look like as it relates to cost? And I'll have Tim talk a little bit about that as well.
Thanks, Jeff. So in a little bit, we will show the scenarios and the costs that are with those scenarios. But we wanted to peel back a little of how did we come up with some of those projections? One of the things we wanted to highlight was what is the market doing right now? So on the screen right now is the current cost index for this region as a benchmark mark of basically what is construction cost today versus yesterday versus the day before. And as you can see that in the graph towards the, to the right, in the COVID years, we had hyperinflation. I think most of us know that. The good news is that has started to level off. You can see in the last three or four quarters being anywhere from 2% to a half percent. And we forecast that to continue on. And what this cost index is made up is a bunch of information, but two main things. The first is material index prices. Material index prices. And this is the where we've actually seen things come back a little from when the COVID spikes happened. And you can see that on the right, all the different material pricing that we track. The other part of it that makes up that cost index is labor. That is the item where we are not anticipating seeing that scale back as, as we all know, as people have gotten raises, they are probably not going to take those back. And so putting those, blending those together, we start to see the cost index level out, but not retreat back to pre-COVID, COVID years. All that to say, we expect anticipate about a 1% per quarter escalation for construction costs, which is very close to what, what has been historically over the last 10 to 20 years. The estimates you're about to see are really detailed estimates. And these are not just dollar per square foot estimates. We actually took trainers' plans and did detail takeoffs on every component of the building. So on the screen is just an example. On the right is getting into the nitty gritty of the foundations. We're actually looking at how large are those foundations for a typical building this size? What are the cubic feet? What are the, what are the pounds per square foot we would typically see in that building? And then that populates into a summary, which then finalizes into the cost that you're going to see. We also wanted to highlight that this is not just a construction cost that we're, we're about to present. It includes additional markups. Go to the next. One more. Additional markups for the, the first is owner costs. So we've included owner soft costs for mainly furniture fixtures and equipment, but also those moving costs of moving departments as, as, as will be needed. Additionally, we have owner contingency as unforeseen may occur during construction. The next category is design and estimate contingency. As much as we try to account for everything that should be assumed in a building inherently in the design this early, there are going to be gaps. And so we've accounted a contingency to make sure that those gaps get filled so that later on, we're not surprised by cost increase or cost creep. And then the final one is that escalation I talked about before. It's a 5% to 7%, depending on the projects, what Jeff will show in a second is the different projects may not all occur on the same day. So different projects will be starting about a year to a year and a half from now projected, which gets you that 5% to 7% of escalation. So all of that will go into making us feel comfortable about the numbers we were about to show and also confident that we can build it for those dollar values.
Excellent. Before I jump to option one, I do want to caveat one thing, well, maybe two things. So first off, as it relates to cost, I think Tim laid it out really, really well. What they're estimating off of today to get to where we are, is a space program, a diagram and a great conversation with our team over the last 30 to 45 days of understanding what is in this courthouse in our minds. So part of it is, is there is some risk here as a group of being able to say, these numbers are probably a tad big conservative because there's not a lot of information there to be able to capture. So as we move through the next phases, those numbers will get more, get tightened up because we'll have more information. So I want to share that because as we go through these, there's a reason for the range. There's a reason for why we're doing what we're doing so that you guys don't just think we're just plugging a number and putting it out there.
I would say too, though, with that, Jeff, and I appreciate that disclaimer. I just think it's also probably, you know, in my experience with capital projects at this stage, that these are pretty realistic numbers as to where we're going to end up being. So I don't, while there are ranges, some things come out and some things go in. So I just don't want us to necessarily think about, you know, we are very conscious of if we're going to put a number out in the public, that it's a number that we're not constantly trying to increase by 20% every time we're talking about it. So.
I would completely agree with you, Sarah. There is no, these numbers are, I mean, if there's a way we're getting and going and a direction that we choose to go, you're right on, Sarah, that we're not trying to increase those numbers at all. So let's start with option one as it relates to the project in, in the master plan overall thought process. So what we've come up with here, and I'm not going to read everything to you as it relates to the left-hand side. I hope as you, you can do that, but I want to hit the highlights as it relates to the diagram to the right. So on this phase, we're looking at an addition in that darker blue color that would be to the south and the east of the existing JLEC building. We would be looking at an addition. It's about 31,000 square feet to the building. Within renovating that space, we're looking at about 71,000 square feet. So to capture the need, as we talked about in a few minutes ago, of that five and 20-year plan, we then would incorporate an addition and a renovation to your building at 1242. We would also do some work at the 1006 New Hampshire building. And then we would also bring the sheriff, ECC and emergency management to a new building at a site to be determined. So the idea is to take those folks out of your current JLEC building in this first phase, build a new piece for them and then add on to the building to capture the rest of your space. That then allows for the first phase to occur and get the courts that we're talking about and the rest of the spaces that we're looking at. And then in phase two, we would circle back and renovate the JLEC building to capture the rest of the 20-year need. And here's a quick diagram as it relates to, just a second, a quick diagram as it relates to kind of how we envision that first phase and second phase happening in the JLEC.
What's the expected time between phase one and phase two? And I imagine it's different for each of these options.
So there, that, the difference between, the time difference between phase one and phase two is the time that the county wants to go do that work. There, there will be a time of about the 10 to 12-year range that you may want to begin to have a conversation about phase two as it relates to what those projections may be. But phase two, in our opinion, is really comes down to when the need comes for the additional courts or additional office space for staff. So we didn't capture a true timeframe that actually allows the county on any of these options to think about that in any frame they'd like to. It could be a five-year window if you so chose. Some of these options may make sense for that. Some of these may be a 10 or 15-year window.
Just to clarify, Jeff, so on this first option, option, option one, the law enforcement center is substantially renovated in the first phase.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then it would have a secondary renovation in phase two to do more space.
Right. To capture the rest of that projection for that 20-year. This probably gets you close to your 10-year window at the end of the day from a standpoint of, of the space needs. And then you could have that capture the rest of it.
I do think, yeah, this is one of the more cost effective ones in terms of phase two because it front loads a lot of those costs upfront. Also in terms of timing inside option one, it appears like this first phase, option one, phase one, might be longer than some of your others. So I think just as we go, that might be something to kind of talk about as well.
Excellent. I'll make sure I do that. You are correct. This is one of those where you're going to capture some space on the outside as new, but it's going to hinder the opportunity of operations within the building. So it's not a clean way to add on to the building. There's a lot of renovation work that's going to happen inside. So with that, I think also with this, there are spaces that we're going to keep as it relates to what we're trying to accomplish. And then when you come back to phase two, then you're going to right-size those spaces.
Jeff, I have a follow-up question. So in the additional 31,200 square feet that's, that's added with, with option one, is that all four of those buildings, or I guess three of those that have additional space, or is that only within the JLE?
Great question. That is only in the JLEC building. The rest of them have additional square footages with those to add up to the number that we need to get to. And I can run through those if you want. I have them in bigger print, so I might be able to actually read them if you'd like.
You're ahead of me then because I can't read them in here.
I, I had to have you print them in 11 by 17 so I could. So we are looking at a, let's, we're looking at a 10,000 square foot addition at the 1242 within about a 4,300 square foot renovation space. And then on the 1006, we have an allowance accounted for there. And part of that is just a small amount of a work that we would do internally to capture some additional space for community corrections. And then we would add a 50,000 square foot new building for the sheriff, ECC and emergency management. Does that help? Okay. So option two, we did spend some quality time as a group together to make sure that this actually was feasible and we weren't presenting an option that would not work. So this option actually adds a, a third level to the building. So I think you may have seen this in the past. This option does add court space there and office space as well. This also adds, let me flip my page just a second. This also adds the 10,000 square feet at 1242 with the renovated 4,300 square feet. And then also again, it captures some additional square footage for community corrections. And then this one does 20, 12,000, 12,500 square feet for an ECC's component only. Now, this one, we could think about this one from the perspective of being able to build that entire building and then come back in later. But this one adds a, a component within in phase two. As you can see down at the bottom right, that we then add the emergency management and sheriff's office in phase two, which is in that duration of timeframe that you guys get to choose and look at as it relates to the needs that you have. This does work. We had a structural engineer look at this, so this can happen. I will tell you, this is the one that we batted around as a team of whether or not it was worth showing. This one is a very complicated from a perspective of being able to do work within this building. At the same time, they were adding a floor to the building. But as we work through this collectively with the users and what have you, we thought it was worth bringing to the table because we do, it does work. There may be some additional costs that come about with this one. As you can see, we did say that there's some limited costs for temporary space. We're looking at that as shifting folks around and working within the space or maybe off-site for a little bit. But if we're actually trying to capture moving the entire judiciary off-site while we do construction, that's not part of this cost. So that may be something that is part of the discussion as it relates to this project or this, this option. Sorry, not this project, but this option. Because it does capture something that you're going to sit here and try to do work while people are trying to have court or trying to do work underneath it. So that's just FYI. I'm not trying, I'm trying to put it all out there on the table as it relates to each of the options. Any questions on that one? Okay. So here's again, a quick little diagram layout to kind of show how phase one goes together and works. Each of the departments that happen and then phase two for the future. So option number three is to look at the parking lot to the south of the existing JLEC building and provide a new build of about 775,000 square feet. The idea here is to capture and utilize the space, the parking space to create a new structure and the structure and then goes up and why everybody does work. And then, and then everybody moves into that space. This does just capture courts space. So sheriff's office, emergency management, ECC would stay in the existing JLEC building at the end of the day. And then they would come back in phase two and do that renovation work. So the idea here is again, capturing a court's judiciary building off to that south side and then being able to reuse the JLEC project or JLEC building for future use for the county.
Jeff, this option probably would give us the most new square footage overall. And so I guess my assumption is, you know, in the old, what would be now the old JLE building, ha, ha, ha. There'd be quite a bit of space in there that would not, would be available for future expansion and growth.
That would be a true statement.
Some of the other options.
Yeah. So I mean, you have currently about 100,000 square feet in that building. When you sit and you look at it at the end of the day, you're probably close to half of that is probably going to be available for some renovation work down the road. So that just, that's, that's a great point.
And the other point on this one is that there's nowhere to park.
Parking does become a little bit cumbersome. I would also share on this option and any option that we shared today, but I think this one in particular, there are some local, local groups that we would have to go and have conversations with, whether that's the historic group and whether that's the city. But I think there might be a little bit of, a little more discussion with an option like this than maybe some of the other options we have. And so I think there would be a more hoops to jump through some other things. I will also share this. We did look at a new build on a different site. Once we looked at those dollars, we also looked at the site itself and some other things. That was really a non-starter as a group and an entity. I know it would sound great. And then maybe for some, it was a great idea. There was just a lot of pieces there and we did not want to bring that one to the table. We felt this was a little bit more feasible than trying to do a new build on a different site. And the other thing that I'd like to share is that every, I think I can say this, most all, if not every one of the stakeholders and users wanted this, this piece to be downtown. They want to do courts downtown. So being somewhere else within the community was, was, I wouldn't say a non-starter, but was a good conversation. So option four, oh, and by the way, option three, it wasn't that I missed a slide. We just didn't do a diagram for that. Again, a new build at that point, we can go and hit, hit the mark when we need to. Option four, this option I think makes a lot of sense as it relates to the overall thought process. So this gives you in addition to the south of the existing JLEC building. This one does allow us to add on about, hold on, 70,000 square feet if I'm not mistaken. Let me double check. Yeah. So we're going to add 70,000 square feet and we're going to renovate about 54,000 square feet within the building. So you, that you can do the math and understand that we are going to keep some folks in it, in their locations a little bit there. With this one, this does give us the opportunity to be able to capture courts and some public circulation space and those types of things in a, an addition to the building. So this work can actually happen. Why work is still happening within the JLEC building. There may be some times where we've got to look at how we temporarily relocate some folks, especially against that south wall of the building. But I think the idea here in this option is to be able to capture a new construction component, why work is happening and then be able to move those folks out of the JLE building into the new component and then go do the renovated work. So there's a couple of elements there that, that start to make some sense as it relates to this. To Sarah's point earlier, this does allow for some of that parking to remain close by. This does have some secure parking allocated as well for this portion of the building for staff in some capacity that can be determined as we move forward. And then a little bit of work in the 1006 building. So this one, this one, I think both from a dollars perspective, as well as capturing your needs for the next five to 10 years, starts to do some things that make some sense at the end of the day. And then phase two would take the sheriff, ECC and emergency management out, move them to a new build somewhere off-site, and then you go and you renovate that space for the need for the 20-year need. Quick diagram to kind of show you how this works. The other piece to this is in all the other options that we're showing as it relates to an addition or renovation piece, recognize we will be including elevators for in custody movement. And so if we're doing that in a fashion, it starts to happen where existing spaces, again, that gets a little cumbersome and can be a little challenging from an operation. And can be a little challenging from an operations perspective. Whereas in this option, you can see here on the upper left image and the red where we would have one elevator, we would be capturing within the existing building. The rest would be in the new build. So again, trying to minimize the amount of work that we would do in a space that's going to be operating in function. And another little piece as it relates to getting to the fourth floor.
Yep. Can you go over? I don't think I understand where parking is in that model. I don't see it.
So we have, and maybe I'm mistaken. I think we have a little bit of parking there in the red, even though we've got it as called out as the as holding. There would be some parking there and or in the mechanical space for some secure parking for staff.
Okay.
Good question. Yeah, this is not a every staff person gets a parking spot. This is a limited group that that would have that space. And even if we don't capture that here, if it would make some sense to capture that onsite to be able to provide secure parking for some staff, whether that's a gated area with a card read access or those types of things. Those are the items that we would make sure we incur here. And then in option five, this comes back to the idea of being able to capture a new build with a little twist to it. So this would go again, a new build in the parking area for courts. This is a larger new build and the fact that what we're capturing here is all spaces in this new build. That would be the permanent component downtown. So that would not include sheriff. E O C or sorry, ECC or Emergency Management. Those folks would stay in the J L E building for the first go around. We would then on phase two, circle back, build a new facility for those folks, do some renovation work. And then actually demo the building and open that up for parking. So that would be some relief of parking if if you so chose down the road. One of the things I do want to talk about as it relates to parking and I don't want to get totally in the weeds on parking. But I wanted to share a couple of things and one of it is, is we didn't do a parking study and there's a reason for that. Part of it is, is we could do that for any of these options or all options. When you choose an option as a commissioner of saying, here's the direction we'd like you to go. The city is going to ask us when I go and sit down with them for the first time in the next thirty days or when you ask us to get started. Is great. Can you do a parking study for that option? And so for us to be able to capture that at that time makes a heck of a lot more sense than to try to do a parking study for all options. I think this you and the city can can actually have a conversation and begin to think about parking holistically in this area at that time, too. That may be part of that conversation. I know. Anyway, I just offer that up as a thought process as it relates to parking. So with that being said, I believe that gets us, if I'm, yep, that gets us all the options. So I'm going to quit talking and I'm going to open it up to you and and your questions.
I'll just say this, the first time we've seen any numbers, so I'm interested to hear from Sarah. I'm pretty sure we don't have the highest number I saw when you add them all together is one hundred and twenty-five million. We don't have that in our. So can you talk to us about our options for bonding and things like that?
Yes, so commissioners, just a little bit of background. Douglas County, counties in Kansas are really limited on the amount of general obligation debt that they can issue just as counties. In comparison to cities, we can do three percent of our like total assessed valuation as opposed to cities that can do thirty percent. There's a couple of ways around that. One of those includes a public building commission, which is allowable in the state of Kansas. Number of counties use public building commissions. It's very common practice. Outside of a public building commission, particularly in Douglas County. We have when when the one cent sales tax was voted on by the public in ninety-six, right? I think it gave Douglas County authority to issue debt off any proceeds from that sales tax. So unlike a lot of places, all of our debt is sales tax backed NGO backed. So I must say all of our debt, most of our debt is is except for very few small pieces that are paid for by. What I would call improvement districts. So inside that sales tax, there's the C I P sales tax fund. That is fed every year by half of the revenues that come from the sales tax. So I believe in the twenty twenty-four budget, that's about four million dollars a year, if I'm remembering correctly off the top of my head. Is going into that fund to feed debt or to pay off debt. The current piece of debt that it is paying off of is a refinanced piece. Related to the building of the Public Works Facility and the nine-one-one P twenty-five radio system expansion project. Those projects happened around twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen. That debt is paid off in about twenty thirty-three, so ten years from now. That is only covering that there's quite a bit of capacity in there from those funds to pay for that. That I've talked to financial advisor about the capacity that that fund has to support additional debt. Financial advisor says that that stream of revenue could support sixty million dollars in debt. Also, as commissioners know, as we went through the budget process, there's also a fund balance in that fund because it's been, you know, we've been working in anticipation of these projects. This is what we we look ahead. So in anticipation of those projects, the funds still go in there and it's been building up a fund balance. There's currently around thirteen million. In the fund balance in that fund. I would say you could easily probably use somewhere between eleven to twelve million of that fund balance to pay cash for this project. I don't think you can spend all of it. You'll need to keep some in the fund to maintain proper fund balances and do debt coverage. So without a, an additional authorization of debt, without a tax increase. Our capacity in that fund is around, I'd say seventy-two million. And then that would really. Tie up all of that capacity, our existing capacity for the next ten years. So as we think about how this project is phased. You know. Those are some considerations to put into place. As commissioners know, I, I really, it makes me nervous. I like you all to have options. And I always like us to have capacity. This project eats the capacity. I mean, it really will exhaust our ability to do, but that's what we've been working for. I mean, this has really been what some of our strong financial stewardship measures have come into place and why we've been working to. Save funds and to be cautious in terms of our debt is, is to be able to afford a project like this and to meet this important need. So I'd say above seventy-three, seventy-two million, we're going to have to talk about other resources of revenue. Is that what you were looking for?
Thanks for that, Sarah. I, well, one comment first is just that. I want to highlight that pretty much all of these options in in one way or another account for, even though I acknowledge it's a relatively small percentage. Account for renovations to and upgrades of all of the buildings that the county owns in the downtown area. So it's a comprehensive plan in that sense and that we're not just talking about the one judicial and law enforcement center that we have today. But how to maximize and figure out the best efficiencies for all of those buildings collectively. On that note, I would really appreciate the like non-slide version of all of these graphics if we can have them in our inbox in the future just to. Be able to zoom in a little bit more clearly and see some of those granular numbers, even though I recognize they're all very projected right now. Can you help me understand, this a little bit goes back to Commissioner Rely's question earlier, I think, but. How to try and calculate for that difference of the five-year projections and the twenty-year projections, sort of like, when does that clock start? When people are i- in new spaces or renovated spaces at five years? Just help me understand how we think about that for when we get to the decision about phasing and and what the most appropriate approach there is.
So, so how we project the the staff need moving forward is two ways. One is there's a true need, some of the departments had. That they currently have staff that are are supposed to be allocated for, but they don't have people in those spots. And then it's projecting that out over the next five, ten and twenty years. Most of what this building has are judges and court staff, okay? So the idea here is that there is a caseload component that happens for each judge. And that load is what it is based on the case type they have or or how they function within their system and and the state system. And so there will be at some point in time a caseload study that's that's done by the state for every county. And when they go do that caseload study, they actually maximize that by the, there's a timeframe that they like to put on. There's a matrix, but there's a timeframe they like to put on for each case. No matter how long it takes physically to do it, there's an average that's that's allocated for that. And the state has a matrix related to that. And so that then goes and says, okay, each county, here's what your caseload is. Here's what the average caseload should be per type. And then here's what that judge count needs to be as it relates to each of those areas. And then they go, the legislation goes and authorizes or or allocates for that judge to to come to the county or the county to be able to actually. Get a new judge, okay? I'm, I know I'm, I'm going in a little bit, but that's then how we get to the rest of the projections, okay? Because if you get a new ju- judge, for instance, then the D A would sit here and say. I need, I think it's a four point five individuals for each judge that comes on based on the staff needs that they have. That also includes the clerk. There's a projection as well for that, as well as other court staff. So that's how we get to where we're going, right? So if the caseload in the state of in 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 Douglas County stays pretty, pretty even keel, right? Then you're probably not sitting here adding judges in the next year or two or five or ten. If the caseload begins to go up, which is the projection we're seeing nationally, then within the next five to 10 years, you may see an additional judge be added to Douglas County. So that's how that projection occurs. And so what we've allocated for, and I just flipped on option four. Is this option in phase one includes ten courtrooms, okay? Those are eight jury capable and then and then two that would be a specialty court. And then to and and to future would be part of the renovation piece that would happen in phase two. And so with that, and why I'm going there is knowing that you currently have nine judges and nine courtrooms. I think that starts to help you and hope, help you understand what that projection looks like. Does that help?
Thanks. It it helps a little bit. I mean, I appreciate the understanding that statewide projections are happening with regards to. District judge. Assignments, allocations for, you know, on the statewide level, so that's helpful. And I, and I didn't articulate my question very well. I'm curious. The five years is from today. That's what I should, okay?
Yes.
Not five years from like either when construction begins or so, okay, I just didn't want to make sure that I was calculating that math correctly. And then. I guess I'm also curious, you just mentioned eight jury capable rooms and and two specialty hearings and it's, most of the options are. Ten courtrooms, two future, right?
All of them do that, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. There was no standard.
That way they're all apples to apples comparisons.
Got it. And is that the, the. Same division, the eight jury capable, two specialty, okay? Can you help me and maybe Judge McCabria can help me like unpack a little bit about where those numbers arrived at? And the sort of the different types of courtrooms and how. I guess it's not a very important question actually to dig into if it, if there's no variance in that between the plans. Because that wasn't really spelled out in detail, but I think what I'm hearing is that that's the same split, the eight and two. With two future courtrooms that I guess are probably a little bit to be determined based on. Future knowledge that we don't have yet.
Yep. No, the judges have emphasized to the architects and I would emphasize to you, you know, the question is. What is the function of the district court and are we serving the people who bring cases into us? And I know it's hard when you walk into that courtroom and you don't see every courtroom full every day. But if we don't have the ability to schedule. A jury trial in our own courtroom when that need arises and we start sharing and splitting and stacking, that is inherently creating delay. And that delay impacts people, whether it's a civil case or criminal cases or victims of crime. So. We've prioritized that in our discussions with them. And it's the most. Flexible space. I can turn a. Jury trial capable courtroom into another kind of courtroom fairly easily. I can't do that in reverse, so. That's, that's been our request and our position with this process.
Thank you, Judge. That's helpful. So then I guess my follow-up question is just. Since the decision was made to sort of keep the the standard numbers of of ten and two. And then eight jury capable, two specialty, two future. Are those all, are like all the eight jury courtrooms going to be standard sizes? Is there going to be variance there? Because right now there's a lot of variance between all of your courtrooms. So inherently, I think sometimes sharing becomes necessary dependent on. The amount of folks you are expecting at a jury trial in your home courtroom. So is that part of the standardization?
Yes.
Okay, I'm seeing head nods.
Yeah, no, let me, let me touch on that just in, just a minute. So yes, is the answer. And and that was part of our discussion as we worked with all the stakeholders was hitting this. Benchmark and the standards and best practices. And so each of those are eighteen hundred square feet for the jury capable and about twelve hundred square feet for the specialty court. And and that's pretty standard across the board. And that does give the judge and the rest of his judges the opportunity to be able to use those spaces. In a multitude of ways from a functional standpoint and it's pretty standard across the board. Does that answer your question, Craig?
So just kind of frame what we get to talk about today and what might be other conversations or future conversations. So we have options in front of us that are more about, you know, method, what are the, what's the method of getting to a a future need? But in terms of specifics about even number of courtrooms, but courtroom sizes, like some of those discussions can happen during the, the, the rest of the planning phase. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I, I think that there's always a discussion once we get to design, to be able to start having those conversations and work with everybody to figure out what makes the most sense. And we may find that there's, there's some additional pull and push on spaces just based on what we want to try to get accomplished. So yes, I think that is a a known thing that happens most of the time in any design process.
Yes, and I, and I'd say we also can go, you know, this is, the space needs study and our work on on the space has been something we've been talking about for a number of years. Those sort of standard size of courtrooms, you know, we can go back in and dig that out and dust that off for for the public about. You know, why our courtrooms are too small and why they're not working the way we need them to right now and what modern efficient courtrooms look like. And I, I think that's something we can also do to just, to us, it was an initial, this is, we know it's too small. This is what the standard, standards are. This is where we've established those, but we could certainly go back and dig some of that up and sort of highlight that for the community. I don't know that if if there's concern that we want, once you see that, that we want to go smaller, we would, we would. Need to talk about how we do that through the design process. You know, that was, I would say, as somebody who's constantly, someone comes and says, hey, we just want to change this wall. One more time in that building. It's, it's been a real struggle. And so some standardization would be super helpful.
Yeah, I was talking to my court administrator who's been here a little over twenty years. She can remember seven fairly significant remodels in that building in the last seven years. I remember when the, when I was a. I remember when the, when I was a law student, clerk's office was in one place. And when I came back in private practice, it was, it was another, and now it's in a different spot and mo- walls get moved. And we've sort of crammed things into, I mean, we're making it work because that's what you want us to do. And that's what we will do no matter what happens. But when we started talking about what does the future hold and what are the priorities that we want to be able to fulfill? That's the starting point. And then as we get into the design, start thinking, drill down into details. Can we move away from that or adjust as needed? Yes. But if we don't start there, then we feel like we're starting behind where we need to be. So.
I'd say an area that I'm also worried about too in this space is that we've, you know, we've seen growth in programs and services in this area, you know, that even having specialty courts, additional staff made available at the state level. Those space needs of five versus 20, well, if we add a whole lot of staff, we're going to hit 20, that 20 year staffing level faster. So as we think about initiatives like the self-help center that are newer to, to the courthouse, um, you know, every, all of those things expedite this program because it's all built around how many people are working in those spaces.
Well, and there were, there were four district court divisions when that building was started. There's nine now. And for every judge you add, you add staff to all of those divisions. And so, uh, I know some things have gone out primarily LPD and we've quickly filled that space. And so if we're going to look at the future, it's, it's starting with what, uh, the research has shown us is what's that standard? And that's what we've asked for. So.
So I, I appreciate looking at best practices and setting those standards. I also see that we have five options in front of us, only two of which fit within our 10 year ability to even supply the debt for it. Um, and that's on the initial phase. So just looking at, um, even those will stretch us considerably. Looking at what are the other wiggle rooms available? So, um, some of those conversations, uh, conversations about, I mean, we haven't mentioned, cause it's not in the downtown area, you know, the youth services building, does it have needs? Does it have capacity? Um, the, uh, uh, work study portion of the jail that is not used for works, I'm sorry. The, um, work release, there you go. Is that space that can also figure into here? Just looking at like, what are the other pieces? But in terms of these five options, I think we can certainly narrow it down to the two that fit into what Sarah has outlined. And, and of those two, we've got one that adds a third story to a building that everyone would be working in. And one that adds in addition, which, uh, gives us a, a greater number of square feet for the same dollars initially. So that's my analysis of it anyway.
That's pretty good.
It was, it was the hardest part of being asked, what do we want? Cause we realize there's what we think is ideal and then there's what can be done. So yes, it's just very difficult for us. And we recognize your job now is to take what you're being given and what, what can you make work? So.
I think in a, to, to your comment about where costs sit and where costs don't and what that looks like. And I know that, uh, Sarah and everyone, uh, challenged us to make sure that we came with options that, that were real and options that could, could be, be done. Right? So, uh, hopefully that's what we've done here is provided those. I, I know there's some stretches on some of these and, and we knew that going in. But on the same hand, what I share with a lot of different folks as I do this in other areas is if we don't show some of those other ones, then it's hard to have a conversation about the ones that actually fit within a budget you have, because everybody starts asking questions, well, what if we did this or what if we did that? And so hopefully this outlines a lot of different ways to get there and gives you an opportunity to think about what makes the most sense at the end of the day for you.
And, and commissioners, I want to be clear, like I, I don't, I didn't have specific direction from you all yet. This is part of the process that you weren't interested in perhaps raising taxes and getting additional authorization for this. So you're right, there is only two options that fit inside our existing authorization and revenues. But, you know, we've raised taxes in the past for projects.
I'd say my thought where I stand now is that I would rather work within what we have capacity for and plan for that. And I'm not interested in a big discussion about raising taxes for this project. I'm not sure that there's enough community understanding about, and the needs for it, which there's safe, significant safety needs and others. But I just think that would be a difficult conversation.
Yeah. Um, tend to agree, Commissioner Willie, and, um, would like to work within our means. And also what helps me feel even more firm about that position is the understanding that the, um, that the number of courtrooms and the sort of standardization across options was a consideration than that those are not necessarily key differences, um, in terms of space that provides. Um, I think that leaves, and I, I will want to go back and digest a lot more of this information, I think, um, to really suss out what those key differences are, not just in terms of the building footprint. And because those differences are pretty obvious on the surface. But in terms of the o- options and how it impacts the non-court functions that are currently in the building. And so, and I'm looking at time and realizing that it's slipping away from us a little bit quick for today's conversation. But, um, I'm curious to hear from sheriff's department and emergency, um, communication center in particular about sort of, um, the big picture ideas about the pros and cons of staying, um, here on this sort of campus, for lack of a better phrase, um, and, uh, or, or with, within the same building, um, or having a separate new building and whether or not that is a more efficient way to help meet the needs of those operations that are, um, different than, than court op- operations and office spaces and the sort of growth and flexibility that, um, uh, projections might show us within court operations and related functions. I would just imagine is probably has some, um, pretty specific differences from what the projections of and needs of sheriff's department. And, um, ECC, those core public safety functions. So I'm curious to try and unpack that a little bit more and understand that and weighing out the options. Cause right now it seems that other than just pure square footage differences, footprint differences, um, the, those, that's the sort of core difference for us to determine, um, the, the value of.
Right. I think, I think the piece, as we talked, uh, as a team collectively, is the idea of capturing the need that's there today for, uh, the, the groups that I think are, and I think I can say this, are sitting in office spaces and doing work in a fashion that may be a hundred square feet, when they need to be a hundred and 50 square feet. And then the other piece is, is as we talked about at the very beginning, and I, I go back to this because I think this is the uh, fundamental element as it relates to courts is circulation. And when we started this project, that was one of the topics of discussion that we had was making sure we a, a, address that as it relates to safety and security within this building. And so all of these do that, all of those accomplish what that is. I think it comes down to where do you as a county want to, want to start the process? Right? So what makes the most sense? And, and then what's the most or the least evasive as it relates to trying to do work um, on a, on a new build or, or on an addition? And then be able to capture the space within the building. I do think there's the ability in any of these options, and I pulled up option four here real quick, where, where, once we're able to move some folks out into the addition space, right? We're able to capture some additional space for renovation for those departments that you're talking about for that five to 10 year window. So that does give you the ability to be able to capture that space, do that kind of, um, uh, for them. Why you plan and think about what happens in that next phase? Cause I do think that when you, and, and I'm not going to try to speak for the sheriff dispatch or emergency management, but because we've had a lot of conversations with them, I think they would tell you that they want it done right. And it's not, hey, let's go move a little piece out here and do this. It makes a little bit more sense, I think, for them to be able to do it all collectively as one element. And to be able to capture that as one piece. And so does that happen like option one shows, or it happens as the first portion? Or does it happen as part of phase two here in, in this option? Does that help kind of thought process? Great.
And I would say, you know, all of those, these options include additional space for emergency communications in that plan, which is needed. They're currently at capacity in terms of their consoles. And, um, so it's, it's not just courts that have significant space needs in this space.
To your point, Commissioner, there's big considerations on whether you build entire new buildings outside of what's presently there. Those we know are your bailiwick. When we talk to the architects, you know, security compromises to the security of the court staff, the litigants, the victims, the public, the judges in the current system that's there. Uh, accessibility for the people who want to use what's there. All of these address that in different, along with different options for you to consider. But we felt good about the security and the accessibility being something that all of the options addressed. And then there's all sorts of other considerations to go with it. But we feel like they heard that and we want you to know that we think all those options, anything, any of them seem better than the risks and the hurdles that exist now with the current facility, just limiting our ability to deliver what we do in the way that the public can benefit from it.
What kinds of decisions are you looking for from us today?
Well, it does, the decisions I don't think have to be made today, but I do think soon we need direction. As to if there are options we can eliminate. And, uh, if there are questions you have on specific options moving forward that you want this to team to come back to you on, we, and you know, we can certainly get additional information and clarity from sheriff's office and ECC on this. And then I think we can ask a little bit about the additional spaces at the, at the law, at the, uh, jail and at, um, youth services. And we can provide you with a little bit more information, but, but pretty quickly here to stay on a timeline on design, we need to decide on an option. And while you're considering options, and I know, you know, two commissioners talked about trying to stay inside our existing financial capacity for this project, that gets you down to two. One of them, uh, uh, the third floor option. I think if you, I don't know if Jimmy Wilkins is here. I, I would say I have significant concerns about that option. It, none of these projects are going to be fun. We've, we've had, um, conversations about, you know, easy options continue to elude us, um, but that project will be, will have costs related to relocation of, of services that are not in that number. And I think they will be substantial. Um, and I do, all of our 911 technology is on the roof of that building. All of our HVAC is on the roof of that building. It is, if, it is not a staff desired option, uh, not that we get a vote. But I just want to pass that kind of information along that the, the rooftop, the third floor option is, is, I think has some it can be done and maybe from an architecture perspective, Jeff finds the challenge fascinating. I think we are really just thinking that option has some serious drawbacks.
So just a couple of things. One, I'm trying to weigh some of these options that have, that use that parking lot. That, that is a community amenity that if we take that over, I understand that we think anyone can park anywhere downtown. But I think that that's an important thing to consider. But, uh, you know, I want to think about option four still, but, but I, I would like us to do a little more work on understanding what finance options we have. So for example, um, in option four, there's, there's no changes. There, there's nothing about our property on Mass Street. So I don't know, are we selling that? Did we include that in the, in the evaluation of it? Is there, so that's one thing to think about and the cost picture of it. I, I'd also like to sort of think about, um, or is there a potential to shell space? Some of the times we're thinking about down the road and is there any cost savings in that? I've done construction projects with shell space and it's not always makes a lot of sense. But you know, I, I want to be cautious of, uh, I understand that every minute it sounds from what J E Dunn is telling us, every minute we sit here, the price goes up. And, and so we need to move quickly, but I also want to think about some of these competing values such as how much it's going, what Sarah talks about, how much it disrupts, disrupts our maintenance by putting a third floor on. I'm interested to understand how much disruption happens with plan one. Because as I look around on plan one, there's a lot of people moving around how, you know, it has the least impact probably to the full envelope of the building. But, but I think there's a lot of things to consider about that. I, I understand that we don't want to raise taxes and stay within our limits, but I also don't want them that to hold us back at this moment of thinking about this project to make sure we have a really good courtroom. There's one thing I don't like about one of the options is having the self-help down in the basement. That doesn't seem to be purposeful for what that's supposed to do. And so I, those are some things that I'm thinking about as I look in the details of these. So I think those are some of the questions that I have right now that I want to keep thinking about and, and appreciate that we need to come back quickly and make some decisions, but those are some answers that I'd like to get.
Okay. And then I know that the, we are up against time, so I'm going to try to hit some highlights. So first off, I want to, I want to tap the idea of shell space. So all of these options or this option here, for instance, provides, uh, space for the, for the future. And there's the ability to capture that. I think we as a team can come back and talk about what some of those cost, uh, uh, values are at the end of the day. Whether that's, you know, a courtroom, whether that's, you know, uh, five to 10,000 square feet of office space, those types of things and bring that back to you. So, so that's one piece to it. As it relates to, to the parking piece, I didn't mean to be flippant as it, if, if I made that comment about you can park anywhere. So I, I don't want that to be the case. I recognize or we recognize that there's a need to do a parking study and understand that and find what the best solution is for the county and what that may be. And it may be something that's a little bit more ortho- unorthodox than, than a normal thought process. We didn't want to show a parking garage because we thought that was a non-starter all the way out as it relates to what those costs are and those types of things, and then where that may be. So I think there's a lot of opportunity to think about that. And then the other piece is, is as you talked about individual spaces or departments within the building. I think that comes back to the idea of schematic design and evaluating that collectively with a group. What we were trying to do here is can we get the spaces to work? And do they make sense? And is there some logic to why they're where, where they are? We have met with each of the stakeholders and I will tell you that yes, self-help has made the same comment. And we would recognize that in the schematic design phase, being able to come back and find what made the most sense and looking at that a little differently. So that's just a quick capture of what, I know I didn't answer all of them. But if, if you want to put those together, we weren't happy to capture those.
And I can throw in on 1242 Mass, um, which is I assume not this building on Massachusetts Street, uh, that you're talking about. Yeah. I think most of the options don't have us utilizing 1242 Massachusetts. So, um, that's something for us to think about, you know? And, and so it wouldn't have to be decided immediately. So it could be, you know, depending on the option, um, we could take some time to think about it. But you're right, most of the options don't have us utilizing 1242. So it could be decided to be get, we could decide to sell it if we want to.
So I probably already mentioned that what has my attention from the start is option four with the addition, fewer disturbances to offices there and, and what's going on in the original building to start with. It's, fits within our budget, sort of. And then it gives us a great deal of flexibility for the future as we plan and change. That I, in addition to the parking consideration about that, I would also just add as a, as a question, are there cost savings to be found by making that a three-story addition and short and small, and, and, um, having a smaller footprint there? So that's just another question I have as you are looking at those.
Excellent. We'll take a look at that. I'm not going to try to be my architect at this moment because I know we're limiting on time. So we'll take a look at that. And that's been a conversation we've had of how do we, can we, can we get it to be a little bit more linear than lengthwise in the parking area? So we'll, we can take a look at that as well. I'm going to comment on one other thing and then I'm, I'll leave it to whatever else you want to ask or if we're done, that's, that's great. So, uh, one thing that I did want to mention, so we are wrapping up our entire study as a booklet. It's about a hundred and some odd pages. Um, we're, we're going to distribute that here this week to each of the users, uh, for, or department heads for some comments. Hopefully getting those comments back here, uh, middle of next week or so. And then be able to turn that back around to the group as, as a component of our final product, uh, which will include all of these options, some narration, further detail as it relates to each of the program areas and spaces. Cost detail as well for each of the options. So we're wrapping that up because we recognize the, uh, time is of the essence. So we want to get that. And then we'll share that with Sarah to be able to share with you guys as well.
I think then we'll, the staff, we will kind of look to gather feedback on these options and bring this back before the commission. Hopefully soon, uh, as soon as we can pull some of these pieces of information together.
I want to check in with commissioners because one thing you asked was, are there options we wanted to take off the table? And so some of these options are significantly higher than, I mean, they are significantly higher. So like option three i- is really an expensive option. And I want to check in with commissioners and see if we are, are thinking like maybe option three needs to go away, you know, I don't want them to spend any more time on something that we don't have any appetite for at this point. I, I'm not comfortable with option three, just looking at the dollar signs attached to it. But I'd be interested from hearing others.
Yeah, I, I, this is Commissioner Reed and I agree. Um, option three is kind of a non-starter for me. And I think I feel similarly about option five. But appreciate your point, Commissioner Kelly, that, um, you know, like, uh, other potential financing options available or ways to stretch dollars or, you know, not just taking the potential of, um, tax increase off the table entirely, because I think we're still a little bit at the surface level of this conversation. So I think keeping three options on the table is, um, a reasonable place to begin. And then appreciate hearing Jeff, your update about, um, the booklet, because I heard you mentioned it earlier in the report, and it feels like that's the next thing that I would like to have to be able to digest a lot further. Information before as a commission, we sort of reconvene, um, to give further direction and make those choices.
Yes, I'm very comfortable with removing three and five.
I am the same. Yes. Okay. Well, we made some progress today. That's good to know. All right. Well, it is, uh, currently 5:15 and we start another meeting at 5:30. So thank you all for coming. Thank you all for attending and, uh, we will adjourn till our 5:30 business meeting.